This conference will now be recorded.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? No, approved unanimously. By the way, I didn't say to start again, the subdivision review for Allentown Duncan Drive Thru has been pulled from the agenda. They will enter at a later time.
So I just got a chat that the sound wasn't going through virtually. I think it should be working now. So we've put the comprehensive plan preview at the beginning of the agenda. And then the idea was I would put more detail at the end. I'm just going to go ahead and do the full thing now. So we had our last. Have to go back. So we've, we had our workshop meeting. Was it last week, two weeks ago? And we reviewed the overall goals and objectives and started into the resource protection. And one of the things that we, we wanted to do was have the ability to comment on these new goals and objectives. So what we've set up is I've set up a page on the comprehensive plan page. There's a sub-page in there. Called the working draft of the plan update. So this is where as we go through these revised goals and objectives and the board says that it's okay to, I don't want to use the word term approve, but say that it's okay to put them out for public comment. And also if you guys have questions or comments that you want to add to it, it gives you that opportunity as well. So this will be the landing page for all of that information once we get through each section. And so we've gone through overall goals and strategies. So that is up on here for the public to review. And like I said, also for the commission and the BOC to review. So this will be very similar to the working outline. So as that working outline gets filled in, this gets filled in as well. So I also have a tab for the updated demographics are in there. As we go through, the open window will be the latest. So once resource protection is done, overall goals and strategies will be closed. But if someone wants to go back, they just have to click an arrow. The other thing we did is we added the comment form. And I have to work on getting the direct link to the form right now. It's just to our forms page. That comment form lists the goals and then has a 500 character text box. So that if anybody has any thoughts or concerns or the commissions, any members have ideas after meetings, this will be where we can catalog and get those comments. So we have the form set up. I have to fine tune some links. We have the landing page for all the updated information and goals and objectives. And then once I finish up these links and get everything cleaned up, I'll add something to the news announcements that says we have the goals and objectives up. Please comment, review and comment and see this page and there'll be links from that. That's the latest thing we've been working on. And the next thing is to look at those resource protection goals, strategies and implementation, and present those at the next workshop and then move into community utilities.
Okay.
Includes my update.
All right. Okay, moving right along. Agenda item five, as I said, with the subdivision review was canceled for this evening. Agenda item six, Tony, the transportation infrastructure update.
So we can do this two ways. I can do the, I guess I might as well go first since I'm already plugged in. We can go over the LVPC's plan and the tip and some of the plant, the projects that are on their list. And then Tony can kind of do a review of what's on the comp plan and the official map. And these are, the idea of this conversation is to get everybody prepped and to start thinking about transportation, which is one of the biggest concerns for this new comp plan. So having a better understanding of all the projects that are out there and kind of where they are in the process is a good foundation for moving forward and making recommendations for the comp plan from there. So the LVPC as part of their future LV have created, they integrated the LRTP. The LRTP is the Long Range Transportation Plan. So this is the, it's a federal setup for running transportation projects through federal funding. So you have the LRTP, which is the long range. And then things go on to the tip, which is the Transportation Improvement Program. But for the LRTP is now integrated into the regional comp plan. So the idea is that the LRTP has to be updated every, Brian, help me out. How many years? Every four years. So that
Actually, every two years.
Two-year, four-year program. So that kind of forces the hand to relook at the regional comp plan. So by marrying land use and transportation, because as plan, as planning commission, we see it all the time, is that the land use has significant transportation impacts. So to marry those two together like they did at the LVPC makes a lot of sense. So you're looking at everything together holistically. So it provides that holistic approach. So what I can do is just kind of go through this list. They have the 309 Tillman Interstate Interchange Project. That project is moving along there in engineering. They're looking at acquisitions of properties, moving utilities. So that is all ongoing right now. Not sure how long that process is going to take, but just know that it's coming. And you'll probably start seeing utility work. So they have to move utility lines prior to any road work beginning. The next one is 22 widening from 15th to Airport Road. So that's to the east, just kind of touches the boundary here. The next project is we have State 309 resurface. So the 309 project, there's a couple, there were several iterations of it. It went from a Betterment project to a resurfacing project to a Betterment project and all kinds of different things in between. With the new funding, they were able to move it up in the schedule and make it more of a Betterment project. We've met with the project manager for that project. The project starts just south of the Walbert Interchange, Walbert Intersection and moves, goes north to it goes way up there, into North Whitehall. So it goes through Orfield. The improvements include turning lanes, restriping, some shoulder widening, signal upgrades, timing, so that'll all be looked at from basically Walbert up into North Whitehall. The thing that we've as staff have pushed for the, this project with the project managers is coordination with the HOP folks. We have the Wawa intersection or at Chapman's Intersection, that project came in. And we wanted to touch base with the 309 Betterment project to see what kind of impacts there are and if there's any opportunity for coordination. So we've been working with those project managers, keeping them up to date on some of the things that the township's seeing, that they may want to integrate into their plan. So that's been really good communication with the project managers on that project.
Have you involved North Whitehall?
We have, yes.
And because they have some significant development proposed among Kernsville and 309.
Yeah, so the, the project, I believe there's scoping meetings coming up with PennDOT. We've asked to be included on those, those lists so that we're aware of what's going on. So in that, that was another one that the Betterment folks may not have known about. They said you should really talk to your HOP folks on that one. And it's an opportunity again for coordination. If the Betterment project is going to be making upgrades at Orfield Road, this project's coming in, they may need to do bigger upgrades for that project. So it gets to that coordination. So yes, we've been talking with South, or North Whitehall. And one of the things we did talk about in our first meeting is when they're ready to have a public meeting, we requested that we have an in-person public meeting here. And we can do it jointly for North Whitehall as well, however they want to handle that part, but put that out there. We'll let you know as soon as, as soon as we hear back from them on that.
One other question I have today, when I was looking at it, there was, it was just a, I think it was mostly a repaving project. And when I had a chance to talk to them, there was, they were asked about the, the turn lanes, it seemed like they're, they're included. And you know, there's a lot of little turn lanes. It's not just the major intersections. There's a lot of little turn lanes that get holed up. And they, they kind of said at the time that they could cheat a little bit and they don't have, necessarily have to have a whole extra lane. Are they looking at that for all the little turns that?
Yeah, I, we had, the first meeting that we had with North Whitehall, they went through all of the improvements all the way north. And basically every intersection is going to be addressed in some, some manner. Some will have dedicated turn lanes, some will have the share lane. But every intersection, they're addressing turning movements. One of the ones that we talked about as a concern was the, and I'm going to forget the name of the road, the one that comes off at the angle.
Hoffmanville.
Hoffmanville.
Yeah.
And we were really concerned about what they're doing with that intersection. And you know, having that, opening that dialogue with the project managers has been great. They've been listening to concerns and been very collaborative. And been a good experience. The interesting thing that I've brought up with both project managers, any chance I get, is the interchange, the Tillman Street Interchange Project stops just north of 22. The 309 Betterment Project starts at Walbert. So there's a section that isn't addressed in either one. So trying to figure out how best to get that stretch looked at
Good.
And get incorporated into planning efforts that they, they may be working on. So that's kind of what's going on with those. Those are the two biggest projects that are on this tip. 22 resurfacing, resurfacing.
Is that different than 22 widening?
Yeah, so they'll have Brian smirking. So I, they're having issues with the bridges on this side of 15th Street. So that's kind of why things are, it's not widening all the way down because they have some bridges and the Turnpike is a big interchange and bridge that needs to get addressed somehow. So those are, you know, Turnpike and PennDOT are dealing with, with those issues. So the widening may take a little while to get all the way down because of these bridge issues.
As far as 22 winding, it's not going to be a third lane. What it's going to be for now, for the foreseeable future, is longer acceleration, deceleration lanes. So you can kind of what they did at the Fullerton Avenue exit, where you have a dedicated long lane where people aren't
Going in, they
Jump in, so.
Yeah.
Don't expect three lanes right now.
Okay.
Another project on, on the long range, well, on the tip. So some of these projects have moved from the long range plan onto the tip and then are getting funded with the infrastructure bill or getting pushed up. The Mott Chunk Road Signalization Project, that includes the two lights at Mott Chunk and I'm really bad with, I'm blanking tonight on my road names. Gerard and Shersville, those two lights will be timed. They're updating those, those signals and they are putting it a light at Presidential. Yes. So they will be, and those lights will be coordinated and timed so that the idea is, you know, there'll be a better flow of traffic through that intersection. Because those are the only lights until you get to 22. But that project is also moving forward. We had a meeting with, with the PennDOT folks on that project as well.
Did they say anything about coordinating it all the way up to Shaw Avenue as well?
We asked, but this project was, they had their limits on it. But it, I mean, eventually they'll start moving up
Right.
You know, out from there.
Okay.
So ITS sign upgrades is on the plan. So actually we have the sign on 309. You might've seen it going in. That'll be tied into intelligent traffic signalization, right? Or signs or
Systems.
System. Which is the system that if there's an accident on one section of the road, it can notify and be sent across the system. So any signs on that system can have that emergency notice go up. So that's what that sign right out here on 309 will be.
And it's also coordinated with the Turnpike. So if the Turnpike has an accident, people can take 309 south instead of causing more congestion.
Yeah.
It's a congestion mitigation tool.
Cedar Crest Boulevard Route 222 Culvert Replacement is on LRTP or it's on the mid-range, so 2023 to 2030. I believe this one is tied I believe this one is tied to the King George Inn. So this is what part of the holdup with the whole Ham, Hotel Hamilton and that project has been related to this Culvert Replacement. So it's on the plan. I assume it's moving forward. It sounds like they're moving it forward. And one of the things with the infrastructure bill is that money is coming through the federal government to the states and these projects that are, you know, on the tip and on the LRTP are getting moved up. So we're starting to see some of these projects happen sooner rather than later. Sooner rather than later for PennDOT is, you know, five years, you know, but at least we're seeing movement and things are starting to, starting to happen.
Because that's a major flooding issue and it's an emergency route for Lehigh Valley Hospital and St. Luke's Allentown.
Yes.
It's got a lot going on.
Yeah. And there's some stormwater issues that we've been paying attention to that flow into there that, you know, we're very cognizant of that issue.
Can I go back on one just, I'm, Cedar Crest Boulevard at Route 22. And I'm talking more about Cedar Crest Boulevard in this case where there's lights there that, you know, there's about 50 of them in a 30-foot length and they don't always, a lot of times the traffic just stops there because the right turns coming out of the highway fill in and you can't move on.
Yeah, so I don't know that that one's on this plan. There's two more instances of South Whitehall on, on the LRTP. I don't believe it's on this list, it may be on the unmet need list, so I'll get to that after we finish this piece. I won't go into all the detail of all the projects.
What was that called again?
Unmet Need.
Oh, okay.
So there was a call a couple of years ago to provide projects to LVPC, LVTS, of projects that you would like to see as a municipality, so that aren't on the tip, aren't on the LRTP and they called it Unmet Needs. Just so that they had that list and some, you know, it's really ballpark estimates so that they had that available should funding miraculously appear or, you know, when they go to update the next LRTP, they can look at that to see if there's any projects that make sense to move, move forward. We have the Jordan Creek Greenway at Matchunk Road. Preliminary engineering and study of below-grade crossing. This is on the long range, so it's kind of far out there. They have it on 2031 to 2045. I think it was one of those projects that because it's crossing a state road and there's a bridge involved, PennDOT's involved. So it's on the long range plan. We'll see how much movement we get as far as moving it up and prioritizing it. I think a lot of it has to do with, once the Greenway gets there, or at least it's planned to get there closer, then it might get bumped up a little bit more. And that appears to be the, yeah, that's it on the LRTP. So Unmet Needs, again, so all these documents are available on LVPC's website through their future LV plan. So if you want any information on that, or if you want any more details on some of these plans, there's access through PennDOT websites. If you're interested, shoot me an email, I'll get you that information, or at least how to access and show you where all that information resides. Unmet Need, so these were projects that were submitted to LVPC. Again, I believe it was when George was here, so surprisingly enough, there's a lot of roundabouts on there. But intersections of, of concern, traffic flow, so things, areas where projects that, you know, should be looked at is really what this list is. Again, I, I don't want to go through the whole list, but one of the ones on there is the 2022 and Lincoln. The concept of a road diet is something that we've talked about as, as planners and transportation planners, is the concept of a road diet, which is a way to put in traffic calming measures to slow speeds is the general intent of a road diet. You know, if there's a safety concern or speeding, there's measures that can be put in place to slow cars down. And that's called traffic calming is another term that, that's used for that. And that was a, an area that it's been on, the Hamilton Corridor's been on a lot of people's radar for a long time. So that is one project that we put in, in here as an unmet. So this is one of the PennDOT websites where you can look up the projects. Well, the Tillman Street Interchange. There's reports on all of the projects, so it's just a, they call it a tip visualization sheet, gives you some information on where it is in the, in the timeline and budgeting and financially. So again, if you want that website, just shoot me an email tomorrow. That was kind of what I wanted to talk about as far as the LRTP and as we're going through this comp plan process, think about, you know, PennDOT projects are these big projects that have to get funded through the process. So LRTP, tip, that's kind of how the federal funding works. If there's projects that, and the other thing with, with LRTP tip projects is some lobbying If there's projects that we want to get in, we can start pushing that, getting it on people's And as we're going, again, going through the comp plan process, as we prioritize projects, that's where, you know, things will bubble to the top and we're going to prioritize this, this is the project we're going to push and forward with that. So that's where I, kind of what I wanted to cover tonight as far as tip projects. And I will turn it over to Tony.
Thank you. I guess, you know, it's obvious that the funding, the PennDOT projects are all our big road projects, something that, you know, PennDOT's looking at from a regional standpoint. I think that as you move into the comp plan, it's also something that we can do to think of township itself. So what do we need in the township? And one way that the, the comp plan setup is there's official maps. Official maps are done. Two in particular that I'm going to bring up right now, we're looking at page two of the existing comp plan, the 09 comp plan, it's the official map. And the colors on these roads really kind of show what a lot of people calls hierarchy of roads. So what we're trying to represent here is that your blue roads are your interstates or your highways, obviously through the township, you have 22, the southern half of Cedar Crest, 309. The intent is to get people in and out of the township through those roads. As you move down, you'll move down to yellow. So those are, that's a different classification of road that goes down to arterial. But what that does is it, the intent is to take people off of these large roads, put them on the arterials, start dispersing traffic from blue to yellow, then to the collector roads and red, and then to the local roads. So as we start to think about projects, land development projects coming in and improvements, I think this is a good way to start thinking about the classifications of road and the hierarchy of roads and how people are going to travel. People don't necessarily like to travel on the local roads through the township. It takes a lot of time, there's a lot of interaction between residential or businesses, stop signs, people. What you want to do is to try and get yourselves from small roads to big roads. So that's why there's classifications of roads. The second, that's the third sheet of the official map, but this is a, done 10 years ago, 12 years ago, but you can see that there are dashed roads drawn on. These are roads that it was the intent to start connecting through open fields or open areas of the, of the township, of how to connect stub streets or areas that we want to fix, change or modify. We just had a project come in, about a month ago or so, the Jerris property that Springfield subdivision, and they actually drew on their sketch plan this connection that was from the official map. So they were connecting Mechanicsville to right north of Ritter. So as these projects come in, if these roads are on the official map, it's a good reason that they would have to do those roads or construct those roads to help the township out. It's almost a requirement, I can say. So again, as we move forward in the comp plan process, not only are we thinking of the existing classifications of road and how traffic moves, it's how the future tra, how the future roads will move, work or better connection points to get in and out. So these again are previously done. In 12 years or so, the township has changed a lot. So I would suggest reviewing both of these plans, they're available on the website, but review both of these plans. See what was done, what needs to be done, what changes in the township are made that would help everyone flow through the township. Last slide, much quicker presentation, but again, part of the comprehensive plan update in 09 was future enhancements to township roads. So as, as Dave mentioned, all those roads on the tip and in PennDOT are your major highways. Our local roads are as important to the township, I would say, as, as those roads are because these are the roads that everyday people travel. So throughout, throughout this map are circles for intersection enhancements in blue, bridge enhancements, those triangles, and then linear projects along roadways in blue lines. The red are projects that are planned for or, and/or done, or still waiting to be done, but thought will be done by this time. But again, as we walk through the comp plan, this is a very, very important part of it. We've, as a township engineer, we have made comments through, I would say, four projects I can say in the last two years that border some of these intersections that require improvements. So at that time, when it's on a map like this, we can bring it up in our letter and have the confidence that this would be a pro, a project that should do a improvement to an intersection. Obviously there are some, again, with large developments that are through this, through the cycle being worked on. But again, different areas of the township where there's growth, we should start looking at those intersections and making sure that it doesn't need to be a design that we have to come up with today. It has to be, there's a lot of room and there's a lot of potential for growth, so let's put this on this plan so that we can think through it and then we have a basis to make comments on as that project comes. So I think these are, you know, between the official map and this project, it, it's not something that is an overnight process, but definitely review it and we can, I guess as Dave goes through the comp plan, when we get to that traffic portion, we can look for different intersections, start stamping them, marking them and adding them to the plan so that we're protected for the next 10 years with getting improvements and having better functioning intersections throughout the township as development happens.
And if I could just jump in is with the federal funding, you have the LRTP and then it gets to the tip, so it's kind of, things are getting closer to being constructed. It's kind of the same thing with the comp plan and the official map. So the comp plan is kind of the bigger picture items and then as you, they could go from there onto the official map. So it's a way to, you know, kind of throw the dreams and ideas on the comp plan and then as things come into focus or prioritize, then they could get moved over to the official map. Again, to give us the ability to put them in our letters and, you know, make, require, or I think official map is negotiate is how the language is structured for the official map. So it, it gives more teeth to these transportation projects moving forward.
Any questions? Not any more questions? All right. Move on to courtesy of the floor, anything, obviously the only floor could be online.
So if anybody online would like to speak, just type your name into the chat and I'll unmute you and patch you through.
I have one item. I just want to thank Al Tope and Bill McNair, who served on the planning commission and other boards for decades for their service to our community, as well as being a mentor to me and when I joined this board 12 years ago. Also want to thank their families for allowing them to be with us over the years during various meetings and special meetings and it's a lot of commitment that sometimes goes underappreciated, but I understand. So I believe as a planning entity, we are a better township for everything they've given to us. So thank you, gentlemen.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. There's nothing else, yeah, about next, next month, is that?
Next month, yes. All right, so I've got two plans submitted and I'm anticipating a resubmission of the third, Allentown Duncan. They wanted to meet with staff, discuss a few things, but as I understand it, they're going to resubmit the exact same plan. Maybe give us a little more supporting information or strategies or whatnot. So they'll be back. 1670 Church Road, DePodde Properties, they're returning with a sketch plan that does show what we asked them to show. So that's good. And then finally, St. Luke's Medical, short-stay facility will return next month as well. Oh, yes. Ridge Farm, Dynal Plan Phase 1B will also be here. So yes, we're going to have a fair-sized meeting. I, I think we can probably handle it all in one. So we'll just have to move through and hopefully not spend until 11 o'clock to get out of there.
Okay.
Next month.
All right. There's nothing else, I'll make a motion to adjourn.
Second?
All in favor? Aye. Thank you.
Thank you.
Gentlemen? A little? 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 A little?